... eighteen at four thirty PM in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Tonight, we're going to go ahead and start with our discussion items. Go a little out of order, and we're going to do, I believe, the update on the Tama Building. So...
Eric, you want to go through what your memo was, and then we'll allow the building owner to come forward and talk.
Yeah. Pull it up here. So, in the packet, went through kind of the process of where we're at with our demolition reserve cost. Under state code, section 515.139, this lays out the process by which the city can receive demolition cost reserve in the instance of damage to a property such as the Tama Building. We deal with this quite a bit for single-family homes that have fires. Don't deal with this too often on structures such as this. But the process by which we gain access to that demolition reserve that kind of secures or backfills us if we need to take action on the property is the insured, in this case, Doug Wells, has to file proof of loss with his insurance company. And then the insurance company has five days to notify the city that they have this demolition reserve cost on hand, and then we have one hundred and eighty days to execute it. And we have to notify them that we're, we have intent to use it within that one hundred and eighty days. So that kind of gives us a timeframe if action isn't taken on a building. That's our backstop of, we need to take action within one hundred and eighty days in order to use these funds, otherwise they go away. And it's ten percent of the insurance cost. So this memo kind of laid out some timeframes to be considered, our actions to be taken by the property owner within a specified approved timeframe in order for us to consider or not consider using those reserve funds. A couple of the steps that Mr. Wells has talked about and laid out in here. Complete engineering on shoring submitted to the city. Complete shoring of existing buildings. All debris removed from city right away and adjacent streets open for vehicular traffic. All remaining debris removed from the site. And then the site completely cleaned and reconstruction commencing, or all portions of the building completely removed and the site felt degraded. So those are some of the key milestones that we'd like to have identified timeframes for those within that six-month period. Not saying the building's complete with that, that period, but it's cleaned up and work is commencing appropriately, or it is completely cleaned up and the site's clear. So that we know we're not going to be left with a site that is partially in a state of disrepair at that one hundred and eighty days, and then we have no remedy or no formal financial backing to address it.
Okay. And how do we, I guess, besides the timelines, how do we consider action that something is happening? How is that, how is that measured?
It would have to be some sort of timeframe, or I think that, that's the only way to see that action is happening, is these are the key indicators and these are the timeframes that we're looking to hit or be pretty close to hitting at that point.
Eric, that notice of loss, or it starts when the notice of loss is filed, right? The clock does?
Correct.
The clock starts when we receive a certified, yeah.
The letter, and he has, he has...
Which will be, which will be predicated, or which will follow up the notice of loss.
Yeah.
But there is no timeframe for that notice of loss to, to be filed after the incident. And there's no, that, there's nothing within state statute that sets any parameters for that or provides us any leeway on, on how that's done.
Yeah, it'd probably be more up to the insurance company and Mr. Wells on what that timeframe is. The insurance company may have a timeframe, but state code does not.
Okay.
The other point with, before Mr. Wells comes forward, any actions that we, we take, we've, we're in the process of doing the placarding. Is there anything else, Eric, that we can do prior to that notice of loss?
Without expending city funds?
Correct.
Other than placarding, no.
Any other efforts that we, we can take, we can undertake any other efforts that we need to, if that's up to what the council ultimately decides to do. But doing so would be outside of using any insurance funds to do if we were to so choose to do that.
My question would be, is what steps would we take that he's not already, doesn't already have the ability to take, given the restrictions with regards to using heavy equipment around a structure?
If we were, if we were doing something, the steps that we would most likely be taking would be to do a complete demolition.
Demolition.
Go out to bid and just do the demolition, which is a completely different process than what Mr. Wells is going through in terms of trying to do his best to maintain a portion of that structure and be able to rebuild.
If, if we went ahead with demolition, Ned, can we, I assume we'd submerge back to his insurance company? No?
If we do it on, if we were to take action prior to a notice of claim, or a notice of the proof of loss being done, and we would be doing that on our own dime. We could assess the cost back to the property, but we wouldn't have insurance proceeds to go against to get that.
That doesn't sound like an avenue that I'm prepared to go down.
Would the council, like Mr. Wells, come forward and talk about his plans?
Before you start, I'd just like to say I'm happy to see that you're here.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here. I have, I think I can alleviate a lot of concerns. This is a letter from Two Rivers Bank dated today. And we have a...
Thank you. I have to copy it. Might get to the media there.
We have a, I'm going to call it intermediate line of credit with Two Rivers Bank, the Two Rivers Bank that is in Burlington, of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We took several different alternatives out to bid for cleaning up the site and keeping what's standing and solid, and several different layers of work. And John Golinski, G and B, was low bidder on, and we've negotiated the terms of a contract with him, and we notified him today. We intend to use him. And I have lump sum pricing that is cleaning up everything that's fallen, and then pricing all the way to completely raising everything that's on the, on the block. So I have four different options from him. I'm happy with the numbers. They were competitive. He's been very good to work with. And, and then I'm going to go through the email when I was unable to make the last meeting that you invited me to. On the timeline we set forth, we're a little ahead of that, that timeline. And so I, I have two, to kind of cut to the chase of the rest of the comments I'm going to make, I have two tracks I'm, I'm pursuing. One is to save the facade of the building, and mainly the Tama Building, the big block that's standing. There are sixteen apartments in that portion, and the framing is pretty much intact. The roof essentially is gone. The interior needs completely removed. The hardwood floor was ruined just by the act of fighting the fire. Got so wet, it did swell up. The antique historic stairway that's in the center of the building, sort of amazingly really tightened up when it got wet, and it's fine. I've been through the whole building several times, and the elevator shaft is standing. So by the end of this week, we get all our subcontract bids in, and then I'm going to compare saving it and raising it. And I really don't have a, a financial choice. I need to look at both, both alternatives. It appears that saving it is, and it would make sense, is costing more, and we'll know by the end of the week about where that is. John Golinski, I'm not sure how to pronounce his name.
Gaasky.
Pardon?
Gaasky, you were close.
All right. Is going to give the project a top priority. In the event that it's decided to raise the building, he can have enough down in two weeks at the streets, and all the parking spaces can be completely, completely open. And so that's a, a practical solution and a, and a quick solution, and it's one that I, I don't want to do. But we have to run these parallel tracks and, and look at the, look at the, the numbers on that. In analyzing the structure, we've, we have hired five different structural engineers. I have reports from three of them, and I have a, a design complete that's being priced that looks the most, the most cost-effective alternative for shoring. And the challenge with the, the shoring and doing that is the timeline that the streets have to, have to remain, remain closed. And that's kind of the, the crux of the, of the problem. The fear is, on the southeast corner, there's a twenty-by-twenty-foot bay where the ceiling on the fifth floor fell down, and it punched out all the floors, all the way down that corner, so that the floor diaphragms or the floor framing in that corner is missing. And, and so rightfully so, the structural engineer's nervous that that corner could fall down. Everyone thinks it would pretty much fall down, but you really, you really don't know. And the, there is thought that it could sort of fall onto itself and sort of lay down in the, in the street, and therefore that's why it's blocked off. Grinnell Mutual determined where those lines are, and our engineers agree with it. And I, I, I do understand the, I mean, the tremendous stress of the mess and the unsightliness in closing the street off in holiday season. It's just, it's, it's, it is a bad deal, and I'm very sorry about that. But, so that's kind of everything going on. When, on the schedule that I sent Eric, since we have the shoring design finalized today, we're about a week early on that. The shoring design I like, materials are more readily available. That date is good, which is November twenty-eighth. Likely that'll be better. And then there's less fabrication with this solution. And what I would, what I'd like to do is, I'm going to know the, the pricing by the end of the week, and I can more accurately work on, on these dates. And, and then I do want to reassure you that our development companies are certainly responsible in what we do, and we're going to clean the mess up. I mean, we are going to take care of it. The money's in place. And I get a lot of emails and, you know, about a general worry that, you know, this guy won't be able to clean this mess up. And it's, it's a tremendous, it's a tremendous mess. So that's kind of our, our report, where, where we are. On the schedule that I sent out, kind of starting in the next area, the item six is demo contractor, identified who he is. And my main thrust and effort is to, to save the, the building. And we should know in a few days about right where the, the numbers are, are on that. And so I guess with that, I would welcome any questions.
So when you find out those numbers and make a decision, will you make sure to contact the Eric as soon as possible?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So I have several questions. The first one is, you'll have an answer as to whether you're going to demo or save the building by November sixteenth, correct?
Yes.
Which is the end of this week?
Yes.
And that's a, that's a date that we can rely on?
Yep.
Okay. Assuming you're going to save the building, what's the expected date that you will have the shoring completed?
On...
Is that November twenty-eighth? Did I hear you right?
The shoring, enough to pull the fence back.
Correct.
And I'll, I'll be more specific. Some is the installation of the shoring we had December twelfth to the nineteenth, and we're still on, on track for, for that.
Well, because the last time you were here, when we started talking about shoring, we actually had a date, I believe, of the end of October in mind for the shoring to be completed. And I think you had some issues with regards to having successfully contacted a company that would take on that project, right? Is that right?
Yep, right.
Okay. So now, December twelfth to the nineteenth is when the actual shoring would be put in place.
Yes.
So assuming holidays in there, we probably wouldn't be able to open the street until right before or right after Christmas time. Is that correct?
Our, our plan on this was to open the street on December nineteenth.
On December nineteenth?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And is your timeline for the reconstruction still roughly April twenty-twenty of completion?
So that timeline we, excuse, we talked about before is still what we're, we're working with.
Okay. So I guess, first, like I said, I'm happy to see that you're here, because it shows me that you're still committed to the project. My biggest frustration was the last time you were supposed to be here, you told us you'd be here. And, and like I told you before, there's two things that I have a lot of concern with, with this project. The first one is communication. So making sure that you're communicating with the people that have an interest in downtown, have businesses downtown. It's extremely important that they're able to understand what progress and steps are being taken to ensure that the cost to them is minimized. And then the other part is actually reducing those costs, and that is just by making sure that people are cleaning up and that the project is moving forward in a way that's, that's going to allow it to be successful. And I don't think anybody at this table is going to say that we're not willing to work with you. We understand that this wasn't something that you...
Certainly.
Initiated, or this isn't your fault. But we still have to look at the big picture, and we have to make sure that we're considering those costs which are being passed on to the people who do have businesses downtown. But then we also have to take into consideration the process that you have to go through with this.
Sure.
So I want to make sure you understand that.
Yeah, I, I, I would echo what Matt said. You know, first, I said last time, you know, I'm, I'm thrilled you're, you're interested in continuing with the project, because the last thing I would like to see is an empty hole there. You know, I've been through a couple of fires in my businesses and a couple of floods, and I know not everything ever go, ever goes according to the timeline. I think this is a lot more realistic than when you first put that out there. And, you know, that's what we need, is realistic, so we can reassure people. Because even if the city took it over today, we're talking six months before we'd have it down.
And I don't think that's possible. And the other thing I'd like to just say is, I would love to see you finish that building. And I think it's really short-sighted to say that it just makes sense to tear it down and get the, the lot cleared for the next two weeks, so that way that the cost is diminished to the people that are downtown over this year's Christmas season. But then I think about the value in, of the, that that building would provide to downtown shopping, like coffee shops or retail shops, if you're able to be successful and put in additional forty-five units on that block. I think the long-term value to those businesses would be far greater. They may disagree with that, but, but I think just taking more of a macro point of view, I think that overall it'd be much more beneficial to see those finished.
Yep.
My question is, you want to save the facade. Is that any reason besides you want to save it, or have you received historic funds or tax credits, or something that makes you have to financially?
No. There, there's really, the most important component to try to retain is, are the, is a CDBG block grant. The, saving the historic tax credits is down on the list a bit. And there are other, we have workarounds for not, not getting, getting those. The, saving the facade obviously is desirable because we, it's downtown Burlington, it's the character, it's why we started the project. I mean, I, that's really important.
If, if you're not able to save the facade, do you plan to put up another structure in its place?
Yes.
Okay. So regardless of whether or not you're able to save the existing structure, you're going to put a building in that place?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Doug, thanks for being here tonight. I know we came down kind of hard on you last week, and I think it's basically we wanted to see your smiling face. I think through this whole ordeal, if we can keep everything transparent, you're going to keep everybody happier from the retail side to the city council side.
Sure.
And I'm glad to hear you're passionate about this project, because I'm, I'm passionate about historic buildings, and I certainly hope we can save her. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I just want to reiterate, communication is really important, because if we were expecting you last time, you weren't here last time, it was kind of just brought to us at the last minute that you weren't going to be here last time. So I would have preferred for you to have communicated that to us prior to the meeting day or the day before.
Sure.
So, and same thing goes for the people that are downtown. Last time you were here, I asked you to make sure that you opened up an avenue where they could communicate with you. I would hope that that's been done. If not, there's a lot of them sitting back there in the crowd, so I would encourage you to do that before you left today.
We also have a, a Facebook page that we occasionally have posts on and, and updates.
Sure. Yep. And I think the community appreciates those, but still, those people have a lot of interest in that building, mainly because it's right next door to the businesses that they have.
Sure.
So I'd like to make sure that they have a way to get ahold of you if they need to. Okay? Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Did you have any...
All right. Did we, any additional comments on this, or?
We forgot it so far.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
As we, from staff perspective, Eric's the one that's been working with Mr. Wells, we, as, as we move forward and do things, we want to make sure that we're sensitive to Mr. Wells and to all the other business owners in the downtown area, and, you know, the community at large, to make sure that we're doing the best by everyone long-term. But we also want to make sure that we're doing it within the confines of where you as a group are, where you want to head, and, and how patient you want to be with any given route. And that's, I mean, that's kind of the crux of having these discussions, to make sure that we keep everyone, communication going and, and open, and just make sure that we're, we don't have anyone feeling like we need to be headed a different direction than what we are.
I mean, I, I take a look at the, the issue at hand and the size of the project, and I don't feel like that the timeline, starting in August to now, is really absurd. I mean, it's pretty practical. It's just the timing sucks. If it had happened in March and we were stabilizing the building and reconstruction, the street was opened in September, it'd make it a lot easier, and a lot easier pedal to swallow, especially for downtown businesses. But the nineteenth, December nineteenth.
I know it is frustrating. I was down for a holiday shop, downtown shop, and I thought there was a great crowd. And I think sometimes Burlingtonians come together when there's adversity, and we were figuring out how to get to the shops we wanted to go to and how to get to the eateries we wanted to, and, and we were making it work. So I think get that message out that, yeah, we've got a speed bump downtown, and it is frustrating and it is irritating, but we're going to get down there anyway, and we're going to support our shops, and we're going to buy local. And so that's my plug, everybody buy local and, and get down there. And, and it was a great time, good food and good shopping, and if, if you missed it, yeah, you, you missed a good time.
Yeah, I would go back to the excitement everybody had when it was getting ready to open. So that's why it was so heartbreaking when we had the fire, so.
I would still like to see you back again on the next work session, because obviously with a project like this, things change. You know, contractors, they change. That's my desire. I don't know if that's unreasonable, or...
I mean, I wouldn't mind seeing him...
Because we have a couple, we have a couple dates, you know...
Well, yeah, if you're getting it up.
... completion dates that we have between now and the twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I just don't want to see him have to run back and forth. I mean, if, if we get, if we get the information about the sixteenth, we ought to know whether it's save or raise. We get that, we can do that via email. And then, you know, surely by communicating with Eric, it needs to be prior, so we all know what's going on. We should be able to know where we're at as far as the shoring goes.
Once you, once, Mr. Wells, once you've decided whether or not you're going to raise or save the building, when do you expect to have architect drawings of the new structure or the, or the completed structure, or what that process or timeline's going to look like?
If the decision is, if, if the decision is made to raise the building, we, we would have drawings, you know, if, is, if the sixteenth's the next city council work session, is that right, December sixteen?
The work, next work session would be the twenty-sixth.
November twenty-sixth and then December tenth.
December tenth?
Yeah.
I would say it, December tenth, yeah.
Okay. I, I mean, I would be for having...
Yeah, I have a conflict on the twenty-sixth.
I would, I would be...
I'd be happy to be here on the tenth.
Him here on the tenth. You okay with that?
That's going to have to be.
December?
Yep. So put that on the work session.
Okay, on the tenth.
On the tenth.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion with this topic? Good? Okay. Um, I guess we'll go on to the next discussion item, if you want to do that?
You can, that, or you can start at the beginning.
Start at the beginning? Yeah. We'll go ahead and do that.
To the beginning it is.
Yep, back to the beginning. Okay, so for our regular proposed agenda, we have some tenure awards, some great service mayor's awards, and so number four is a public hearing, consideration of sale of property locally known as one zero zero six Elm Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Eric?
Now, this is a property you can acquire through the abandoned building program. It's a very small property on Elm Street between Central and Tenth Street. Received one bid currently from Patrick Smith for five hundred dollars. This is a home built in eighteen fifty-eight, two-bedroom, one-bath, fifty-three-by-forty-foot lot. Typical condition of a home that we acquire is abandoned, does need a lot of work. And similar conditions, house shall be rehabbed, housing occupancy standards are demolished and combined with adjacent lot. Does have to be rehabbed to the standards prior to occupancy. Someone can't buy it, move in and start to fix it up. It has to meet minimum code standards prior to moving in, including plumbing and electrical. So currently one bid. I don't know if we'll receive another or not, but we brought it forward since we had that bid.
Yeah, looks good.
Just curious, do they know any of the history of it? Was it a old log cabin or a school, or?
Not.
Eighteen fifty-eight, she's old.
Yeah, yeah.
Neat.
Well, the mayor was here, he would say it's going to make someone a lovely home.
Yes, absolutely. All right.
We might be bidding on that one.
Yeah?
Yeah. I think we could move in.
Oh, my gosh. Hush.
You might as well.
Okay, so number five, we have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amendment to ordinance number three-two-two-zero, and ordinance creating the Sunrise West. to ordinance number 3220, an ordinance creating the Sunrise West Land Unit Development Overlay District by making changes to section four land use requirements. This is a first reading.
This, find my map here. Applies to Sunrise West. They've recently installed a street connection, continuing Cambridge Drive to the north. It's not shown constructed here, but as they started construction. And with that, they're plating, going to be plating five new lots. This hasn't come before council yet. We need to make an amendment to the PUD to make construction on those lots legal and the lot size legal based on what they're looking to do. So typically through Sunrise West, they have developed all their condos on single lots. I guess their original plan for this, these are all lot one, they're all on shared lot, shared lot, so there's multiple structures on a shared lot. What they're looking to do now is build a single structure on each individual lot. So the primary reason for that is tax purposes. They're taxed as commercial or considered to be taxed as commercial or could be taxed as commercial since there's multiple buildings on one lot. So really the zoning changes just to not raise their taxes for these structures. It's going to be the same type of development, same footprint, same setbacks as typical, but we do have to modify the PUD because now they're on individual lots instead of one large lot. So that's what's kind of referenced here in section four to A. And it references this preliminary plat if approved, specifies what the setback would be, 25-foot rear yard setback, and then allowing a maximum 15-foot wide porch addition that they've typically had out there to project no closer than 14 feet into the rear setback area. And then allowing the lots to be no less than 98 feet in depth, our typical zoning requires a 100-foot deep lot. So that's basically what they're looking to do. It's not going to change the appearance of what, or what or how things are developed out there. It's just on paper, they're going to be on individual lots and so that PUD needs to be adjusted accordingly.
Cool. Good? Any questions?
I'm alright with it.
Concerns? Good? Okay, the next one, we have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 West Burlington and Agency Intersection Traffic Signal Detection. Did I? Oh. Crossed it off already, yeah. Well, have a seat up front, we'll get, we'll get back to you. How about number six? Public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter 161 Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. This is also a first reading.
Annually, we do a review of our codes and done a recent review of our housing code and had a few recommended amendments to that code. Go through them here. In packet, there's four, four sections that we had recommended changing, one being definitions, replacement window. We did not have a definition or a code of what a replacement window is. And a lot of these occur either with updates to other codes or just instances where it kind of becomes an issue or arises. And adding the definition that a replacement window means a window that's installed in an existing window opening without the need of altering or reducing the size of the original window opening. We've had some houses, I think more prominently one on 6th Street across from Harmony Bible that put in some windows that were very small for the window opening size that technically met code based on how the lack of definition here, but were not the intent of the code and really reduced the size of those openings. A lot of them smaller than egress where that wasn't an issue, but it was more of how we're changing some of these windows and just putting in random window sizes into existing openings. Second one, electrical requirements. This is upgrading the housing code to reference what the minimum standards from the electrical code are. Adding the GFCA protected outlets shall be provided in kitchens, bathrooms, or any room where an outlet is within six feet of water access. That is required under the electrical code, but it wasn't specifically spelled out in our housing code, so just to make sure that's aware for owners and residents that that is a requirement. Number 25 here, shades, draperies, and window coverings. In rooming houses or rooming units, furnished dwelling units, we do require window coverings to be provided for the privacy of the occupant. Currently, our code also requires hardware to be supplied in any other unit for the possibility of adding shades or draperies, which through our inspection process, we found a lot of owners just putting stuff there that doesn't, isn't necessarily useful to the tenant and then they buy something different and they're ripping it off and it just creates a lot of confusion on they're providing something that isn't useful or making more holes in the wall. And it doesn't say they have to provide the coverings, it's just the hardware. So you might have two, two little, I guess, ledges or something up near the window that isn't getting used and isn't practical. And then the third one is responsibility of owner-related maintenance and occupancy of the premises. Just adding in that for gas appliances and facilities, allows gas line with rigid black iron piping or any other gas pipe allowed by city code. So we've updated our city code to allow additional piping standards and want to make sure that our housing code isn't more strict, that there are other options other than rigid black iron piping that are allowed by code and making sure that's in our code. There was one other one that didn't get in the packet, we'd like to add for the council meeting on Monday. For egress windows, currently the minimum size is five square feet at grade level, 5.7 elsewhere. And then it does allow the code official to approve minor changes provided hillside, or sill heights are not over 44 inches above the floor and minimum height and width have been met. And then it does state a minimum clear opening of four feet at grade and five square feet elsewhere. We'd like to take out that four and five square feet. It seems, that's kind of a target area for some individuals. Instead of trying to meet the intent of the code, they're just trying to meet the minimum. And we already have the language that allows the code official to provide some exception and we'd rather not have just a hard low cap on that and just go back to our five and 5.7 and then where it makes sense. And they still meet them width and height requirements, we don't have that 4.0 and the five square feet, if that makes sense.
Any questions?
Goodbye me.
Okay. Now we have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 West Burlington and Agency Intersection Traffic Signal Detection.
This resolution would award bid to Dave Bean Bazin Electric in the amount of $46,930 for camera detection at the West Burlington Avenue and Agency Street intersection. This is part of the RISE grant. We tried to get it as a change order with the previous contractor for the road construction and it didn't work out, it didn't make sense. So the estimate on this project was $40,000 for the camera detection. The bid was 6,900 more than that. I can tell you that it's a lot less than what the desired change order amount was, so we saved ourselves some money by going back out to bid. We are still within the budget of the project as a RISE grant project. It's an 80%, 20% match. And then amongst the 20% match, it's split between ourselves and West Burlington. I don't know the percentage on that, but it still brings us underneath the threshold of the budget. So I would recommend approval.
Nick, I have a question that was submitted to me by a resident and I'm sure I know the answer, but these are strictly for traffic, traffic signs or not, so Chief Kramer can start writing a bunch of tickets by video.
Correct.
Right.
It's for the coordination of the, of the traffic signals.
I'm glad you clarified that, I had the same question.
So, thanks. Other than that, I'm good with it.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you. And number eight is a resolution approving the five-year road plan for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
The resolution here is approval of the five-year war, road plan. We do this every fall, go back through and plan out the next five years with the road projects. I'm actually going to pass out the map. You received it in the, in the packet, but it did not, it's really small on this PDF, but it has a breakdown of kind of the budget. And then the best thing to see is the balance of the money that's spent. And then I'm going to let Jesse come in.
Thanks Nick.
So while you guys are taking a look at that, I'll just kind of give you a broad overview of how we get to the five-year road plan. Obviously, we're always looking at our streets and everything, but kind of the main, one of the main tools we use is every two years in our region, the Iowa Pavement Management Institute takes this big truck out and they drive it on every street in Iowa every other year. So on the year that we get that data back, they look at things like cracking, rutting, rideability, a lot of different things, and then they compile all of that into one number that is the pavement condition index. And we look at those, they range anywhere from one to 100. Eric, I believe I sent you the PDF just so we can put that up on the board and everybody can kind of see the general condition of the roads. So we have a lot of varying, you know, conditions, which is to be expected. It's going to be hard to get all of it on the same screen, so I guess just kind of scroll around for everybody's information. But with this specific program, we're looking at most of the roads that pop up in red and then some of the ones that are still in a, to a point where we can maintain them and do some things to extend the life of the road. So that's really one of the main tools we use. Nick, Chris Clements, the Streets and Sewers Operations Manager, he, he has a lot of input because his guys are always, you know, out driving the roads and, you know, they're, they're more intimately familiar with the conditions of these and then we kind of determine everything based on that. The image you guys are looking at includes both project work through, handled through the capital funds and any grants that we would have gotten. So you will see that we did get the grant and everything was approved for the work out by the Recplex. We'll be putting in a new road there this year. We have some work on Aspen and Dill where we're completely reconstructing the concrete road there. And then Harrison will be a pretty big HMA overlay project this year that we're doing from Summer Street to River Street. So those are the notable ones this coming year. The one up north off of Mount Pleasant Street was actually one we did last year, so that one's in error. But as far as notable changes to this, we did move Madison up a year because we did receive some grant funding for that one. And as we pursue and get more grants and outside funds, this always gets revised and, you know, we'll add more streets to it. So I guess with that, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the, the plan in general? We tried to stay below budget and just put everything that we know we can get done on here, so.
Do you have an average score for the, our street system?
I think our average was somewhere right around, it was right around 50. So between 40 and 50, I believe, is where we're at. And that's generally what they tell you you should be shooting for anyway. You want to follow a bell curve and I showed that last year, but I didn't know how much everybody took out of it. But we do have a small amount on the low side, a bigger amount in the middle, and then a smaller amount on the high side as well, so.
And then do you have a, do you target what it would take to keep, say on a five-year basis, you're doing a five-year road plan? How much you have to financially spend on that road system just to maintain that existing score? Have you put together any benchmarks like that?
Yes. And there, trust me, there's a lot of different ways to look at this. If we're strictly doing like a remove and replace type of thing and no maintenance at all, that number is like four to five million. But the street and sewers maintenance guys, they do a pretty good job of patching and extending the life and doing some intermittent maintenance. So it's really like around the two million to three million range.
Just to maintain?
Yeah.
The way that we're doing it?
Yep. And I think with the help of grant funding and what we're putting in there, we're, we're in that ballpark, so.
I know we've done that over the last three to four years, so.
Yeah. And, and we're starting to use a new tool that will definitively tell you that in a, in a more visual representation is through that Iowa Pavement Management Institute that I was referencing earlier. They have a program that is really cheap to us to use that we've been getting into and doing modeling. So say if you want your roads to be at a, a condition index of 60, which I plan probably next year to roll that out and say, here's what a road that's 60 looks like. If we want to get to this for our average road or better, it's going to take this much money over the span of, you know, this many years.
I think that would be a great way to, for the council bill, kind of target and prioritize how they want to use CIP funds towards these types of projects.
Yeah, because the road work definitely is not cheap, so. And everything we can do to kind of maintain and extend the life of these things is critical, so.
I have a question. Our new, our patching system that we're using, you know, we patched a one road and I'm getting all kinds of heat about it because the gentleman knows me.
Total patcher?
And it's done off Court Street and the bricks that we patched are already coming up through, so the patch didn't stick. So what is the citizens', when we do that, what is the citizens' recourse? Do they contact the Streets Department to, to inquire about that? Because it, it would appear that it's not lasting.
Nick says he wants this one, so.
Alright, thanks.
I know the specific road that you're talking about.
Yes, we talked about it.
The best answer for that road is a complete reconstruct with concrete. Asphalt over top of that, there isn't enough, you're not going to be able to get enough depth of asphalt on top of that brick because it's already fairly flush with the pre, with the concrete that it matches up to unless you're going to feather all asphalt across there. I don't think that makes a lot of sense. The total patcher, it doesn't look pretty right after it, but it is a cheap fix that holds up over time. And so, and I know a lot of people see the gravel and I've discussed this in the past, but the, the amount of rock that we're able to put down per ton versus the cost of hot mixed asphalt or even cold patch is significantly cheaper. And so we're able to attack a lot more holes or areas that are bad with that total patcher. I agree, it doesn't look great right after because it, when you put the oil down and then you top dress it.
Right.
You, you have to put that top dress on top, otherwise the oil will end up on your cars.
Yeah, I guess...
And that's a better solution than the oil on the cars.
I guess what my question is, Nick, is it would appear that sections of that are already coming off. So do, do we ever go back through there and look and say, well, we need to take another crack at a couple sections here?
But we probably would use the total patcher again.
Okay, alright.
That, that's probably the answer. I mean, the, the best answer is a complete reconstruct with concrete.
Okay.
Which street is that?
We've also... Section of Court, I think.
It's just a little...
We've also talked about that as being something that we actually, we do, but we don't know where that fits in. It's not, it certainly isn't, the trouble is it's not a priority, any type of a priority street. And that's what I want to follow up. When we do our five-year road plan, it's not just, PCI has a factor in how you lay out a five-year road plan. You don't necessarily go after the worst first type, in certain cases, some roads that are asphalt overlays are in such bad shape, you just limp them along until you have the available funds until you can do a complete reconstruction.
And this one could actually, because it's a dead end, could be, and it's so short, you know, it's not a vial, it's not a passageway street. By the same token, you know, when the patch doesn't hold, I'd like to see us have some way for them to go to, well, good, maybe we could do a little bit here to, to hold it back in place. Because the other thing, I got a, I got a phone call that, you know, sprained his ankle and, and I understand where those, those problems are, but he was, he was asking me what his recourse was and I told him to call you, so. I didn't, didn't even throw the same...
Unfortunately, I would probably answer him the way I, I answered you, is that, we're doing the best we can with what we have.
Okay.
I mean, unless the, the property owners in that area want to do an assessment to get that fixed, it's, that section of road specifically is not in the plan.
Well, and that might be an option for him. He expressed that, so you might want to contact him.
Okay. Well, and we can reach out and do that.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
So, so I think, do you have the other map of the actual five-year road plan? That's just the BCI data. Wanted to touch a little bit on the, you talked a little bit about next year's roads and then if you go back up to downtown, you'll notice that the TIF, or not TIF, the Tiger Grant Projects, Main Street and Jefferson Street are thrown in there along with an STBG project. I think at the time SDP for Washington Street. Those we have in there, we have some matching funds for the SDP project, but those will, it just trying to gives you a magnitude of, of when road projects are going to be happening in contingency with... in contingency with, along with other road projects. That's something we ran into this year. We took out, you know, two major thoroughfares in town down at the same time and wire you work, so it gives you an idea on what roads we'll be working on at the same time. And then the fifth year out, we put Agency Street up there from where we ended with the project, the East Agency Project as I'll call it, probably could call it the Middle Agency Street Project. But that section of asphalt, the base is crumbling pretty bad and we would go after STBG funds, so you'll see that coming in an application here in the next couple of But I think you have a full budgeted price in there, correct?
I do have a full budgeted price.
So.
That's a full depth, right?
Full depth reconstruction. And that would go all the way from Melrose to Curran.
What's the life, what's the life of a full depth replacement road?
Twenty to thirty?
Well.
Depends on the.
Before we're doing anything.
If you're doing concrete and you're building everything per the current standards, they're saying fifty to sixty years and that includes, they count a thin asphalt overlay as a maintenance type.
Protector.
Right. So, you're, if you're, when your pavement goes, you know, you overlay it to preserve some of that life. You know, we've had some areas where that is not an option just due to the faulting and some things that they did way back when, the quality of the concrete and different reinforcing and that. But generally speaking, if you're doing a full depth replacement with the concrete and then some maintenance along the way, you can get fifty years, sixty years, something like that. It's not a question.
You may not know the answer to this, but how many miles of road do we have in the city of Rock?
Hundred and sixty-seven.
Hundred and sixty-seven miles.
Lane miles.
And growing every day, thankfully.
Yeah.
So, we'd have to pour three point three miles of new depth reconstruction street every year in order to be able to keep up with that.
And you see what the distances of that Agency Street project that uses up a full year.
What, quarter mile?
Yeah, it would, that Agency on the west would have been.
Best guess, educated guess, what's it cost per mile?
Per mile of concrete?
Yeah.
For one lane.
And this is four lanes, so. So, it's more like a one mile of.
Single lane.
I'd have to scratch some numbers out. I haven't, I don't have it exactly like that, but.
Best educated guess.
Per square foot, I need to, I have to have the exact number, I'm sorry.
He's an engineer.
I don't blame you. I don't blame you, Justin.
The minute you say it, the minute you say it educated, it's.
So, half a million per lane mile, there's.
Half a million per lane mile, so for two lanes, it's a million bucks and for four lanes, it's two million bucks per mile, right?
So, and what you get is, is that you can't do it on what we're spending.
I agree.
And that's where, as you look at our, as you look at the condition index that he had, and I don't, are you putting that up on the website too?
Uh, we can.
I think it would be a good thing so that people who want to take a look can.
Yeah, because we always get the question, well, why aren't you doing my street? Why are you wasting your time on their street?
But we would have to spend about three and a half million dollars.
With a grain of salt.
Yes, yes.
Because the way that they set up their sensors to test that, certain roads that are actually in fairly decent shape test poorly because of the way it rides, the sensitivity that they set up. So, if you go back to West Avenue, the road condition is actually in really good shape, the structure of the concrete is, but there's that faulting, that rivet feel that you give when you drive out on West Avenue.
Right.
As a project, but if you look at the rest of it, doesn't necessarily, roll it up there as a red flag to try and go out there and fix it right away.
But if we were to say, okay, we're just not going to do overlays and we're just going, we're not going to do any of the gravel type stuff that we've done, we're just going to do these full depths so we get the most life out of them with the least amount of maintenance, we'd have to spend about three and a half million of today's money just to keep that on a constant schedule and that doesn't include any maintenance.
That's correct.
For anything else that we would do.
Yeah, and we just.
And that's with the assumption that everything's already concrete.
And we simply can't afford it, which is why when you look at the lane index, the quality of it, you do have a good chunk of roads that are on the lower, lower side and you can make a system work with, with roads that are on, and that's part of where you're trying to figure out how do we make sure that we manage our money well to, where do we save roads that you can put in a smaller amount of money to get, to extend them better versus doing that full depth repair?
Do you, do you see an avenue, and I know it's not in this plan, but do you see an avenue beyond this plan where we start to focus in on some of those non-collector, non-articular roads, much like what John was talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it's on there and really what we try to do is the funding we can apply for.
Sure.
Only qualifies in a collector arterial.
Federally classified.
Yeah, the federally classified roads. So, those are the ones we really chase funding for and kind of leave them out there in hopes that we're going to get federal funding for that and then.
And you got to have our match to go with that.
Exactly.
Which is what's pulling away from a lot of these other ones and I understand that.
Part of what we've done.
But yeah, we are focusing on some of those smaller roads, but it's just harder to get to them because you're, again, putting up all the costs.
Part of what we've done over the last couple of years anyway, the focus on getting Agency Street done is it is within a TIF area. We have the ability to, we have some cash flow ability within the TIF area to take advantage of and we've kind of tried to do projects that can take advantage of that and extend, expand how much street work that we're able to get accomplished on an annual basis. One that I don't know if we've talked a lot about, but with the, well, mentioned at least with Nick, like the Washington Street was set up, we're using federal funds, but our match on that, we have the potential to look at that being a TIF project and we, we could go beyond what we do of, a more enhanced project than what we'd originally budgeted to do.
It just applies as an HMA overlay, which I think seems like a good idea.
Stand up, you need to stand up at the microphone if you're going to say.
I know, I've been talking mostly to the chair. Washington Street was applied for as an HMA overlay from the bridge deck at the Central Overpass to front. So, that's, that's a big extensive road section, but unfortunately, an overlay doesn't give that road that lifespan that would if you did full depth concrete. You know, there's, there's brick underneath a lot of it, you know, that brick just does not help that out at all.
Shifts and.
And so, I think the best way we can move forward with that is to maybe look at doing full depth reconstruction. That means changing the application a little bit, but I don't think the deal is going to back that we go after a better product.
So, that's something that we'll be looking at as a potential project here and as we go into this budget season, I mean, I can only afford to do so much.
But I would rather do less with better products than more with a lesser product because I think in the long run, council sitting here twenty, twenty-five years from now are going to greatly appreciate that because then now, they're not worried about going back out trying to find funding to redo a project that we did at a marginally better price. Do you see what I'm saying?
I, I think that's where we ended up with all the seal coat roads that we have. I think that we were just, that, that the city in the past has just been trying to get them improved and so they seal coated them as a, seal coat is a cheap effort to get in there and get, you know, it's, its cost is way better than asphalt. I mean, it doesn't hold up near as long, but its cost per mile is a lot cheaper.
Right.
And so, I think that's what we were trying to do throughout history is trying to get that in there. The only thing is, is if you do all concrete, at some point, it's going to hit its life cycle and it's going to come at you and it might come at you as a deluge more than you're able to handle, you know, and then your cost per square mile to try and replace all of that is extremely high. I mean, that's the good thing about, at least doing seal coat is you have a cheap fix and then you continue that cheap fix moving forward.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it comes with what it is. Seal coat doesn't look pretty when it first starts. It kind of looks like asphalt for most of its life and it doesn't last near as long. I mean, it's five to seven years.
Can you put asphalt on a seal coat?
You could build it up, but I don't know what base you're going to have underneath of it.
You can, but you're not going to have great asphalt with it as much as, like a, you can do a thicker asphalt or something like that, but you're still paying pretty high for the life you're expecting to get out of it.
We'll, we'll update the PDF in the pack and I know that the one didn't have money on it and maybe look at the colors. I looked at a couple of the colors and they don't look.
The brown doesn't show.
We have the colorblind guy picking the colors for the.
Sorry, didn't have any kind of second opinion of the colors.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have some?
The only thing, other thing I was going to say is, we, we have the ability and flexibility to use some TIF funds to do some things, not a tremendous amount this next year, but we do have a lot, a significant amount of debt that comes off.
The falling there.
Yeah, TIF payments over the course of about two years out, I think, is where it goes from the two mil, two point five million. Next year, we, right now, we have two million and in two years, I think it goes down to about one point three million, something like that. So, there's a lot of flexibility to add on other projects, but there's only so much regardless and there's only so much debt capacity that we can use. I think that if we're going to do a project like the Washington Street corridor one, we're already doing the Jefferson Street and the Main Street corridor with the Tiger, Tiger Grant, but it makes sense to try to coordinate in there and use some of the, do some of the same things and spend a little bit more when we have an extra tool to be able to fund it beyond just our geo bonding that we're doing on an annual basis.
Sure.
But the biggest thing that we're going to have to have that we weren't talking about TIF wise before, I think we want to have the next phase of the floodfall project backstop by TIF.
Instead of the sales tax revenue?
Well, it'll still have the sales tax revenue backing it, but when you don't have sales tax revenue coming in, it's kind of moot and we've talked about it staff wise, the, I think the next phase was supposed to be pumps, but what we would like to see operationally is what, the north?
The north, that north side there, especially with the ability to do floodgates, just the complications with going across Burlington Short Line tracks with HESCO barriers and schedule of time, you know, when they, when they're on, you know, they can't operate anymore versus, those HESCOs are extremely hard to get up and then down again.
Yeah, I saw we have a pile there now, so, you know, they only have a finite.
And they want, they don't want that, those left up, you know, we left the HESCOs around the auditorium for a year and a half when you had four floods come up. They don't want that. They want, as soon as the water is off the tracks, they want to run trains. They need to be running them every, at most, they can get by about three days without running something with, before it has a significant impact on them.
Yeah, they can load trains on property for a little while, but.
But that means for us, you know, when you're dealing with HESCOs in there, they don't work well when you set them up, tear part of them down and then try to reconnect back into them and.
And the biggest problem that we had is, is the rock ballast that they use underneath the tracks. We had to go in there and we had, we had to ask for permission for one, tell them what we were going to do. We had to go in and take out the rock and replace it with clay and pack it down so you don't have water boiling underneath of it.
Right.
And then we had to, we set up clay on top of it so we could have at least a somewhat smooth surface to take the HESCO barriers across.
And not only that, but then you have to do all the engineering when you go put all that back in there, right, to make sure that that base is stable?
Hmm, not the amount that we're, we're not taking out that amount. We're just taking probably a four foot section of rock that we're putting back in there.
Wait, so that project got pushed back a year, so are you talking about moving it back up and back in with TIF?
So, that would be a TIF back project that would look tentatively at construction beginning in the spring of twenty twenty, if we get that approved.
It was supposed to be next year, wasn't it? Or was it?
Nineteen was construction.
On the original plan, correct?
So, it'd be a year behind.
I was going to interrupt about roads again.
Go ahead, we're talking.
The other thing that to take in consideration, it's been a little bit delayed, but is sewer separation is in the area where you see a lot of seal coat. If you look at the PCI data, you could see a lot of roads in that neighborhood are not in good shape. A lot of them will probably benefit from sewer separation in the sense that when we're doing work in there, we'll be excavating and be required to go back and replace the road. So, especially in the Locust Basin, which is the most recent one that you've seen in front of you. But moving forward, even if we decide to go maybe with a permeable pavement of some sort, whether it be a paver or concrete or asphalt or other type of road improvements, you know, stormwater detention off the side of the road might also include a new road surface. So, that's stuff that we didn't put in the plan because I don't, we don't necessarily know where we're headed yet in that direction, but with the Locust separation, we will be touching, you know, a fair amount of square footage of roads. So, I mean, that's something to consider when we're, we're not touching that area, but we will be through other projects.
They'll get a new surface that aren't getting paid for with the road use tax or geo bonding.
Sewer bonds.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
Okay. All right. Next, we have the proposed consent agenda and number one is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Any questions?
No questions.
Six thousand six hundred dollars. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the two thousand seventeen Vineyard Street Area Drainage Project.
This resolution would close out the Vineyard Street Area Project. This project was bid out at two hundred and seventy-three, seven ninety-four. There were some quantity adjustments towards the positive and then there was a couple, there was a change, I think it was a couple of change orders for some tree removal. The total budget project was at three hundred and thirteen, so the total as cost was at two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, so it came under what we expected it to do. This is on the consent agenda, may be requested by some of the residents in that area to come off of the consent and be put on the regular. I know that there are some unhappy residents in that area from this project due to the ditching that's now in their front yards. Just the way the right of way was done when that area was platted, some of the right of way area is right outside of their door, which means they have a ditch right out in front of their property now. You know, we, we did a three to one design on that. I know the final grading had, needed a little bit of work. I haven't been through there lately, but there's some, there's some people in that area that probably aren't very happy with having a ditch in their property, but I felt like this project over the most recent years has probably been our one that we've done outreach the most or the best on. So, maybe it wasn't communicated clearly enough to the people in that area of what the project entailed, but I thought we did our best to try and communicate to them, so just as a heads up that there might be some upset citizens with this project.
Were the issues that were created, were they avoidable?
I would say no. I mean, ultimately, you could have avoided them by putting curb and gutter in, but you would have expended another hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars instead of doing ditch work, you could have done curb and gutter. But there, there were some people that were upset because their trees that were in the right of way were removed because when you did the ditch work, a lot of their roots were exposed and they had to come out.
Sure.
So, I think there was a lot of that, but then also the ditch, there were some people that didn't know and I, with the petition that initiated the project and then the outreach we did, we thought we communicated clearly to everybody, but.
Would it make sense to try and replace the trees?
I don't know where you'd put them, I mean, if you're putting them back where they were, it would be in the ditch now. I mean, it would be in the bottom of the ditch and I don't know how well that would work with water flow. You could probably put them in their property, but that would be a conversation.
I mean, I would say.
Well, let's go ahead and pull that off, we'll pull that off.
How many trees have we removed yet?
I would say pull it off if the residents show up other than that, unless.
I believe we removed eight or nine large trees and a couple of smaller ones. We did offer to replace them. I don't, I don't think anybody took us up on it, but we offered that to some people about the trees. I think the biggest thing is we got the petition to put a ditch in. We put a ditch in and then there's people that aren't happy about the ditch, so.
Okay.
All right.
Dave?
Thank you. Um.
My would.
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and, we'll go ahead and take it off the consent.
Okay, because Jim has those notes, I'll tell them, okay.
Okay, great. And number three is resolution authorizing internal loan from General Fund to Tax Increment Revenue Fund.
Okay, so this is an annual resolution that we do.
Okay, so this is an annual resolution that we do, um, this is what we call kind of an annual appropriation. So, um, basically every year we get charges, attorney charges, and our bonding attorney also will send us, um, a bill for when we have changes to our TIF district. So this is authorizing that we transfer twenty thousand dollars from our TIF doing an eternal loan, um, for the legal expenses we pay out of the general fund. So what is going to happen, December first, I have to certify all our TIF debt with the Des Moines County Auditor. So this is a step that we do this time of the year, so I can put that twenty thousand dollars as TIF debt, so we get paid back. And as you'll see, will come up through the other resolutions, that's also kinda doing the same thing, so, do you have any questions? Okay.
All right, next is a resolution approving annual financial report.
So in your packet, you'll see this is the annual financial report, the state requires us to file December first, needs to be approved, um, by the city council, and we will also publish it in the paper. I will, um, publish it the day after you guys approve it, so you'll approve it next Monday, it'll be in the paper, um, on, um, Tuesday. Um, basically, it's just a recap of, um, our revenues and our expenditures for fiscal year eighteen. And then after it gets published and I have proof of publication, then it gets filed electronically with the state. So, um, this year, we didn't go over, um, budget and any of the different functions, so that's always good news. Um, as we did our budget amendment and everything fell into place and nothing came up unexpected. So, um, basically, these are, you know, obviously numbers that were just audited last week by our auditor, so we're pretty good that there's gonna be no changes, so.
Very good.
Anybody has any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay, next, number five is a resolution approving annual urban renewal report.
So this is another December first deadline by the state of Iowa, they kinda all come at once. Again, this one needs to be approved by the city council, this one is going, again, reporting what happened in fiscal year eighteen, actually in our TIF, um, in our TIF fund. So as you can see, it shows in all the TIF revenue we brought in, and then basically our non rebate expenditures, those would be the debt payments, um, that we made with TIF revenue. Um, and then our rebates, those are what's coming up in the next resolutions, but those are where we have authorized the TIF rebates in the past for Weingard, Grograder, Burlington, Burlington Crossing. So that's, um, TIF revenue that we get in and then we turn around and, and, and take out. So this is just reclassing by, by TIF district and all the different projects that we've done, you can see how it all, the, the debt is tied to a project and that's how we report it, so.
Okay.
Anybody has any questions on that?
No, I think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Next, number six is a resolution obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership, TIF rebate subfund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year.
Okay, so the next three ones, um, we'll just, I'll explain all together if you have any questions. But basically, this is, now we're looking forward, the last report, we were looking back at fiscal year eighteen, now we're looking all the way to FY twenty. This is the debt we're certifying that we can draw down, um, for these rebates in our next fiscal year. And the reason we do that now is because I'll put it as debt on this December first report I have to turn into the county auditor. So the first one, um, is the Greater Burlington Partnership, so what I do, the county sends me the estimate of the TIF revenue we should be getting, I bump that up a little bit so we make sure we have enough. You know, if for some reason it, it comes in a little bit higher, that I can pay it out to them, cause this is an annual appropriation. So, um, the Weingard, Grograder, Burlington and Burlington Crossings, this debt we have to do every year, um, it's not something that, that's guaranteed the next year. So, um, again, you can see with the estimates, um, they all have end dates, they all have maximum amounts, that's included in the resolution. And then this is, again, just the estimates that we're gonna obligate for the fiscal year twenty for TIF debt.
Okay.
Okay, and that was in reference to Greater Burlington Partnership.
Six, seven, eight.
On six, seven was Weingard, and eight is Burlington Crossing.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't need to.
Okay.
Talk about each. Thanks. Uh, number nine is a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure for Park West subdivision. Better, better pay, pay attention.
Uh, this resolution, uh, is actually following last week's, uh, final plat, uh, the resolution in front of you accepts the infrastructure at the Park West, uh, subdivision. So the road of Horizon, the Storm Sewer, and then the Sanitary. So as of next Tuesday, should we have any snowstorm or anything, we would be pushing the snow.
Okay.
All right.
Are you satisfied with it?
Um, I was satisfied, I think that maybe the width of the road, long term, may, might have been short sighted, depending on the connections that are made. Um, I think that the, the standards that we have in place need to include streetlights, because as of currently, there are no streetlights that are installed on that lot. So we have to have our subdivision standards, uh, get approved pretty quick, like, prior to anybody else developing next year.
So are you planning to adjust not only the streetlights, but also are you planning to do anything with the width of roads?
Hmm, not current, no, I mean, as far as in the subdivision standards or with the current road out at Park West.
Either one, not with the current road, cause we're not.
Um, I, I think that when we sit down and look at some of the road connections, uh, where we wanna make roads that connect through, we probably wanna take a look at the road widths and approve a road that makes sense. It might mean that we contribute some to make that road, uh, future collector at some point, but as of it, I think it's twenty-seven foot wide right now, so.
What would, what should it have been?
If you wanna have as a collector, you probably are more like thirty-two, thirty-three, somewhere in there, enough where you can have, um, two cars drive side by side along with, uh, enough room for parking, so.
On the streetlights, we, what do we need to do to resolve that so future developments have?
Uh, we need to get it in our subdivision standards.
Okay.
And that needs to come through council, um.
All right.
So we'll see that.
Prior, prior to Mr. Nichols leaving, it was in the works, but, you know.
Okay.
Now you have one less staff member that was helping get that.
Sure.
You know, taken care of, and so we have to get that going.
Okay.
No, ideally, we would want some standard in there moving forward, so everybody's playing on the same level and they know what to expect when they're installing stuff.
Probably makes sense to try and get that done as soon as possible, because you could see development or future developments you're assuming, so.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution, uh, approving resignation and release agreement between the city of Burlington, Iowa and Alex Place as a Burlington Fire Department firefighter.
All right. Yeah. The, well, I'll just say, this is a very unusual.
Yeah.
Request, so Alex Place was hired last October as a firefighter, he was granted an extension for his residency, he was, lived in North Liberty, had a wife and a kid, kid going to school. City manager allowed him to keep that residency up until July first. Well, after July first of this year, he still didn't meet our residency requirement, so in October, you know, he basically had a choice to make, he's either gonna establish residency or be let go. He chose not to establish residency, he was terminated, I had given him the option of resigning at the time, he didn't take that option. A few weeks later, he wanted that option to resign, have a resignation instead of termination, which I thought was unusual, but we had, just went ahead and asked the city attorney, and he said, well, there's some beneficial language, we could put in a contract for the city. I, I mean, I'm not afraid of him, he's not gonna sue the city or the fire department, I mean, he, he left on good terms, I mean, he was terminated, but as far as that goes, he's not, but he knew that was gonna happen, so. This agreement just lets the city out of any liability, and if anybody calls and asks, I guess the city's answer is gonna be, he resigned, I guess. We made him aware this is a public agreement, I guess any employer could do a Google search and it'll probably pop up and they'll see that. But he wasn't a bad employee, other than this one issue, and.
So he was driving from North Liberty to here to work?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think, I, I think working with a person like that also, you know, those, those genres of employees all seem to talk, so it's kinda nice to know that, hey, you know, it didn't, it didn't work out, but we didn't hold him out, out on a stake fire saying, now this is a bad, bad guy, you worked with him, so I appreciate that.
Is that something in the future we need to look at, amending, I mean, as the world becomes more, you know, people do commute quite large distances.
For us, I don't think, I mean, one of the things wasn't when we talked was, we need you here, like, just for instance, last night, you have a call in fire, I don't need you coming from an hour and a half away to a fire, we need you here in minutes, so.
Yeah, that's the point of having those restrictions.
Yeah, and maybe there's some other jobs in the city, but, you know, we don't care if it takes you an hour and a half to get here, but for us, I mean, that's, that's just not, city manager.
I forget how you guys operate.
That just doesn't, it doesn't work.
I was thinking of scheduled shifts, but never mind, yeah, you answered my question, so.
So, and I think, you know, all the full-time fire departments have their residency requirement, so.
Sounds good.
Makes sense now, that you explained it, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, we have number eleven, a resolution approving sub license agreement between the city of Burlington, Zico Systems, Inc., and Huckleberry Hotel LLC for use by the Renewable Energy Committee. Read only access to the plug-in electric vehicle charging station data derived from Huckleberry's use of the licensed software at their location in Burlington, Iowa.
Could you read that again?
Yeah.
I had her cut that down, it, cat, no.
No.
So, we had, uh, some electric charging stations that were put in, our Renewable Energy Committee had worked on this, they've received a grant from Alliant to help pay for this. And the ones out at, uh, Huckleberry, uh, out at the, um, Fund City.
Yeah.
Um, in their lot, uh, we don't have, outside of us being a pass-through for the funds that went, uh, to Huckleberry to help with them purchasing the unit from a lot, the funds from Alliant. We don't have any say in any dog, dog in the fight for the data that's out there, it's an arrangement that, uh, Fund City did with the, whoever that Zico Systems is, uh, to put in, to install those. Well, there's a, Zico is actually the software that reads the data that's on there, Renewable Energy Committee would like to be able to have access to that, to that data. This is an agreement that gives, provides them access to the information off of, off of that system, so they have an idea of how often those, uh, systems are being used.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Let's see, we have some set date for public hearings, December third, two thousand eighteen, one, A, is a consideration for an application to Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Micro Enterprise Assistance Pilot Program. And, uh, another is a consideration of lease agreement between the city of Burlington and MOS T LLC for use of Dankert Park Pool. We'll talk about those things on December third. And we have our next discussion item, which is number two, land swap with BNSF.
This is, uh, goes back to, uh, the original presentation that was made by Y and J Properties, I don't know if they were listed as that when, uh, they made their presentation back in June or July of two thousand seventeen. They talked about the, developing the two buildings, and I'm so bad remembering names of anything, I'm not gonna come up with the names of, of those, where Motos was and, um, then where hopefully what yours used to be. With the development of those, I think at the time, they were looking at a hundred and ten apartments in them.
Yeah.
Uh, and they were looking for parking spaces to go with them, I think a hundred and forty spots was what they were tentatively thinking about needing. Um, and requested the city to help them meet the needs of that parking development. I mean, that's just having a, for them to get their financing, they need to be able to show that they can meet the, the parking needs. They, the city did pass a resolution, I think in July last year, uh, co, committing to trying to work on the, the parking needs for them. Really, when we went through the different options for what was available to do, we looked at, uh, some different, um, on-street parking, uh, possibilities, uh, development, development of a second floor on, uh, what, the Valley and Main Street parking lot. And then the, the BNSF land is developing that into some parking area, and really the one that, the only one that really they felt was a good viable, and really the, the on-street parking that didn't do it, for, from our perspective. We knew that we could just sort of minimize the amount of off-street parking that would be, you know, needed elsewhere. That, it was the one that they really preferred to see happen, uh, the, our other real possibility was more expensive, for one, uh, putting a deck on at Valley and Main. Uh, when we looked at this originally, um, and.
You have the design, or the?
Well, just get the land swap that's up there, uh, we came up with a design for putting in a hundred and ten spots.
That's not it, but.
During, with that process, and Downtown Partners, are you the ones who worked with the, the state to come up with the, the concept that you've put up here, Erica's put up? The idea of putting in some, the parking, what the landscaping could look like, um, I don't know if, when you were doing that, you talked about potentially the, a sound barrier wall. And as, as we've had talk about, uh, doing art, artwork on a wall in the downtown area, uh, staff wise, we've talked about that potentially being a location. If you had a, a wall structure there, um, as long as it was, the wall structure itself was satisfactory to BNSF, cause they, they're gonna have some requirements on that. Uh, the, 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 the north face of that wall, the parking lot side could be used for, for that, if, if that's what you kinda wanna have this be something that's a concept that's part of this. But when we did that, when we looked at what, not necessarily the, putting a cost to this design standard that, uh, the state put together for us, we used, when we looked at the cost estimate back then for parking, uh, so six hundred and fifty thousand dollars the engineering department came up with. We've modified that since then, uh, for a couple of things, uh, engineering department has had a couple of parking lots get bid out and seen some of the, the costs that went with that, uh, that's helped them to change a little bit of their numbers. We've also reduced the number of spots that are necessary, and I don't, I don't know if maybe, maybe you'll wanna talk about, um.
The design was.
The design that we have.
Originally, to include all the spots, went underneath the Sixth Street overpass.
The original design.
Included a lot more paving.
Yeah, it's about a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty spots.
I think you had all the spots fit underneath of that.
So, we've put together an idea now, I just, I think it's a hundred and ten spots, isn't it? Jesse?
I don't remember what that size is. Yeah, yeah, it's closer to a hundred and ten, it's a little smaller than the footprint you're seeing up there, um, I don't have the cost figures off the top of my head on what that was, I wasn't really prepared to talk to the cost perspective of it, um.
Yeah, five hundred thousand is a good ballpark.
Yeah, so, so we were able to, to shrink that footprint and reduce some of the cost and still get close to the same amount of parking out of it that they were wanting, um.
And it's, leaves room on the west end for, is, a discussional east of the dog park.
Right.
Underneath the, the overpass.
Yep, and, and that whole east part of the lot, or west part of the lot, yes.
Um, so you put together some of the designs with that, we, we went through a lot of talk with the BNSF, and po, originally, when we came back to the council with the, the concept of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost and what it would, would take. When we were able to get ahold of BNSF, they were talking about a, a lease of the land, uh, the council, when we came and brought that to the council at the time, that was last fall. I don't think you were too happy with the idea of spending six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on land that you're leasing that had a, had a thirty-day potential.
Yeah, no.
Termination of lease provision on it. And we spent the last year talking, uh, trying to get them to consider other alternatives other than that. We talked with them about the idea of purchasing the land, um, they never were really ecstatic about that. The idea of swapping land, which is what our topic is here, though, they had a little bit more interest in seeing occur. They don't use that piece of property, I don't know if they use it hardly at all.
There were other people parking there, and there's some railroad ties stored there, but.
But they like the idea of having some vacant land adjacent to the tracks, so if they need something at some point, it, there's some viability for them, so.
Right.
As, I don't know if you want, you, you had the, the picture. As, I don't know if you want, you, you had the, the picture of the land swap up, and I think it's in the packet, too. But what we talked with them about was purchasing from them what's in blue, or getting from them what's in blue, and swapping the, the former Dresser-Rand site. Not the whole site you're looking to carve off.
We need, we have two large sewers that are running through there that will need some pretty substantial easements on there because you want to make sure that you have plenty of easement right-of-way type of area. So, if you ever need to get in an access that you're not having to ask the railroad for permission because they aren't really, uh, the best to deal with when you have to enter their property. I'll just leave it at that.
And then access to the bridge.
And access to the bridge as well. So, for the same reasons, we want to make sure we carve off, you know, easements and accessibility for everything we need to do.
Which side is that on?
Both the sewers?
Both, well.
Well, we'd go around basically the bridge there on the south and east side of, of the land that you see outlined. And then the Gunnison Sewer comes basically to the north and east through that, I guess, bottom corner, just below where that five point one-one acres is. And it heads, like I said, north and east towards the tracks where it meets the Hawkeye Sewer that basically wraps in and around and over on the north side of the bridge. So, we have two big sewers coming through there.
And what you're looking at there is primarily easements to make sure that we have access on those. In regards to the bridge itself, we're looking at carving out fifteen foot, right? Fifteen foot of land around?
I was looking for more like thirty because if you ever need to get vehicles in and out of there.
So, you have adequate room.
Just looking at the construction we've been doing.
That's just adjacent to the bridge all the way around the property. We don't have that, we haven't had the discussions with them about these types of details. Parts of what we need to do, too. I mean, we had to do cleanup efforts on the Dresser-Rand site. They've had to do cleanup efforts on the, on their land. And both parties need to see what's gone on with the others to make sure that we're not taking on more than what we're giving up in terms of liability on those.
Right.
And, and we've sent them some information as far as, we had phase one environmental assessments done when, when we acquired that property. We've passed those on, but we haven't heard much of a response, one way or another, on, on their thoughts on it, so. And we're, we're trying to talk about, you know, those easements and offsets, but we haven't been able to iron out too many details and say, here's what we're thinking, so.
And it's, that discussion has gone about the way the whole discussion over the last year has gone. So, I mean, we've basically had, to my, to my knowledge, I've had contact with two different people saying they're willing to talk about the land swap. Well, one saying they're willing to talk about it, and then the person from the Real Estate Division calling and saying that they're willing to start working through the details of that.
And, and we've been sending them things and prodding them every once in a while along the way. Yeah, every week for the last year or so, so.
So, it's not like we're anywhere near having a, something to present to you, but we want to make sure that we're still on the right track and that this makes sense for what we're doing.
Yeah, as far, as far as I'm concerned, if you, if you can get it done with the proper easements and you're happy with that, let's get it done. I, I think that's a good move.
The next, I guess, the next thing kind of of note with the whole property, this one specifically, is there was Iowa Department of Land Stewardship money for a green alley regarding, or related to the Tama Building. We've been talking with the Idols people because we didn't want to lose those funds, and they've agreed to let us apply green infrastructure funds to a parking lot. So, when you see, you know, some of these planters and things like that, we're hoping to incorporate those types of things into the parking lot to, I guess, give us some aesthetic value and things of that nature without driving up the cost.
It won't cheapen the project up. We'll just basically be spending that much extra, but.
But it will be provided.
I will say that I'm okay with the land swap, but I'm, I'm not in favor of giving up the east part of that property that we're considering. First off, I'm not thrilled about the fact that we're giving them almost twice as much land as what we're getting. I understand that there's value added there for us because of the project going on across the street. One of my biggest issues is, there's a large number of people, when they enter our community, that enter our community through Central Street. And when they come down that hill, the last thing I want them to see is whatever BNSF decides to put on that property, whether it's a large pile of I-beams or railroad ties. And, and that's replicated on the riverfront down here. If you go down there, there's large pieces of industrial material or machinery, and that's not the first thing I want people to see when they enter our community. So, I'm all, I'm okay with giving them the west side because I think that if need be, we have the ability to put up some type of visual barrier on the east side so that that's not the first thing at the forefront when they enter our community. And it would still give us the ability to do other things on that side, whether it's a parking lot to promote the buildings that are across the street should they need one. I know that one of the things that we did with Division Iowa stuff was talk about the potential of some type of development in that area and using that space as the parking lot for that. I just, I'm not comfortable with giving up that east side. They'd still be getting a pretty good deal if they just took the west side because they're still getting more land than what they have now. And it's actually more usable than the land that they have right now because there's a bridge that goes right through the land that they have right now. But I wouldn't be.
And I, I get what you're saying, but by the same token, we've been staring at it, we've been staring at a pile of bricks on Central Street holding that in place for five, six years.
I, I don't disagree with it, but.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I don't see where, I, I understand that, but I, I guess I feel differently, Matt. To me, we did the Brownfield study. We still don't really have a viable use for that Dresser-Rand site. As long as we can get the easements, as far as where I'm going to come down on, and, you know, we can always agree to disagree. I'm going to say, let's get it done, as, as stated, to, to work on.
I, I think this, to me, just screams one of those things where years from now, when somebody's coming forth and they want to do something, we're going to be saying, you know what? I wish we would have tried to restructure that differently.
Could we real, very well be.
And I think that for us, the east side of that property could serve a real purpose someday. And I think once we give it to them, it will be virtually impossible to get it back. And it also will limit our ability to control what that looks like. And given its location, like I said, I wouldn't vote in favor of giving that, that one, that parcel up.
Any other questions?
Does the council want us to proceed with trying to work out this, or no?
I would.
I'm a yes.
I like the idea.
So long as everything works out and, you know, more in our favor than not.
And we can also see if they're, they'd be willing to cut back. But really, I think they, out of the two sides, the east side is what was attractive for them for this consideration. And we're the ones that have a specific need for something. So, I mean, I understand we're giving up more than what we're getting land-wise, but we're the ones with a viable need.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as the swap goes, I mean, they're getting the much better end of the deal. There's no way to, to argue against that, the way that it currently sits.
From a pure land acreage, certainly is.
And I think the immediate concern, too, with this development happening is we promised them a number of spots and outside of getting this.
We don't have a way to make it happen.
We don't have a really viable option of getting them the spots. If we put a parking deck on it, it's going to cost.
Bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, and the way I was raised, you got, you got a property there, you're going to get property taxes on, and, and we can help it, make it a viable property versus something that's undeveloped, and we had a Brownfield study on that no one really has a plan for.
And I don't disagree with that, but I think we're going to, over the next five years, we're going to spend a ton of money downtown trying to dress it up. And it just, it's a shame to have the gateway to that downtown, one of the gateways to that downtown be the entrance to an industrial site that essentially could be used better, so.
Industrial happens, but.
All right, well, go ahead and get something worked up for, you know, you to.
It'll be about six months, probably.
Sounds good.
That's when we'll see it.
All right. So, um, future discussion items, tip policy?
The only thing that we had, we, Eric and I, I need to get from Eric if he had a word copy of the Johnson policy. We wanted to do some, some.
Right.
Some, something to, a what-if.
Yeah.
Proposal, and we just didn't have time to do that last week.
Okay, so, maybe, maybe next time. Sounds good. All right. Do you have anything, anyone, anyone else? Eric, you got anything? Awesome.
Shop local.
Yes, of course.
Lots of great deals to be had downtown, all kinds of fun open houses you can attend. Just really, really check it out. I, I think you'll bring a smile to your face. I think there's a lot of new things down there that you feel like a kid in a candy store. There really is a lot of new development and fun things going on.
For sure.
I'll echo that, not only shop local, you know, if you're going to go to a big box store, go to our local big box stores where our employees are citizens here. Because we need all the sales tax dollars we can get. When anytime you buy off Amazon, it's killing us, so. Shop here.
Yes.
Sometime we will.
Yeah, eventually.
It's not yet.
Mr. Inker?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Good.
City manager?
Got something?
I know Nick has an item to add to the agenda.
Actually, I, I do have one question before Nick jumps on his parade. It's actually a question for Nick. Where are we on the sewer next to the Memorial Auditorium? The.
The open.
The Hawkeye Arch.
Oh, yeah. That big hole in the ground. Yeah. They have to wait until the river gets down to about thirteen foot before they're actually able to do anything. At fourteen foot, it's about a few inches away from the top of the arch. And so, for them to put the planks in, because the plank, the, the planks at the end of the storm sewer don't go all the way up, so river water would still be in. They're going to have to de-water quite a bit. I think it's at fourteen seven-ish today.
It's not projected to down thirteen until.
Doesn't look like it's dropping very quick.
Two, two, three weeks from now.
So, I'm guessing sometime in December, maybe, as, as we start to get a little colder weather and don't have any moisture, I think we probably could get down there.
How long is it going to take them to get that project finished?
It really won't take that long. I mean, once they get, think, assuming everything's cleaned up okay and there's not a bunch of sediment that they have to.
And your other concern will be what, what's the temperature in your.
Cold water concrete, I, cold water, cold weather concrete. It's a new invention, I thought.
Cold water.
Cold water concrete. So, I would, I would expect it to take several more weeks until you get that river down to a level that they can put the stop logs in and then pump. I mean, I, I'm fearful of having the stop logs in if you get a big rain because that, you know, that storm sewer takes two-thirds of the town storm sewer. And if you put stop logs at the end of it, it reduces its flow, so.
Puts the stop logs in and he looks at the weather and he panics.
You're funny, Jim.
Thank you. Did you have something else?
Good news or bad news?
Um, bad news first.
I wouldn't say it's bad news, it's just not ideal news. Mount Pleasant Street, the paving has been completed. Received words that Water Works will be excavating in the north lane. There is a water valve for a sprinkler line that runs to a business there that is leaking. So, they will be doing an excavation. I don't know the timing of that excavation, but there's still striping that has to go on, so I don't know the timing of when that is going to happen. But I'm not overly pleased with the situation.
Did you raise this as a concern with them?
I'm not going to comment, Jim. I don't think it's appropriate.
It's one that we brought up.
Right.
So, as something goes on, or as this goes on, just, just, this was one that we raised a concern during the, before we got to this point, that this was a potential problem.
I assume it was properly documented.
Well, I don't, well, I was.
And from our perspective, it's not our concern. We, we address it, we let the utility know that there's an issue. I guess it was not foreseen as an issue, given that we had a month and a half of open excavation that would have not caused any delays to the project or.
Right.
Re, you know, redoing the, a done project.
I mean, there's like, there's an email chain or whatever.
No, and this isn't something that's a cost to, to us. It's just, it would have been nice to have had it done before.
It just makes, people don't know the difference, in all honesty. It, it makes me feel as though the city doesn't know, their head from their butt, you know what I mean? It doesn't know it looks like we coordinate anything.
Yeah.
We go out there, we do a brand-new project, and then we rip it back up.
Yeah, because we're going to hear about it.
Completely frustrating.
And so, I guess it just frustrates me that we get this project complete and then we hear news a week after we have new asphalt completely done on the project, that it's going to be tore up. And I think, I think they knew partway through, but because of the lane structuring, they weren't going to be able to do it until it was completed.
Well, especially where it's bad is that you brought it up, right? Because you brought it up and said, hey, look, we're going to be here and you might want to address this. And that's what really, that's what sticks in my craw is that you gave them the opportunity, so. It's not cool.
It's a crawl.
I don't know.
I'll show you later.
Well, anyway.
Was that all the negative?
And I, I'll just say, to be fair, from their side, they didn't feel that it was something that needed to be addressed, but it.
Seems like it happens.
I, I felt like it was a judgment call that could have been easily corrected.
Yeah.
Okay.
Totally get it.
It's, it's just frustrating on our end to, to deal with the backlash that we get because, yes, I want them to correct the issue, but it's just, the timing of it is terrible.
Yep.
And so. So, anyway, I have some good news.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Good news is always good.
I hear some commentary in the background. We, on Thursday last week, myself and Mr. Howe went to the Iowa Better Concrete Conference where we received two awards for concrete work. The first being the flood wall mitigation project, the flood wall.
Yeah.
And then the Roundabout Project, we also received an award for. So, I have two.
The Roundabout got an award.
Correct.
Sweet.
And so, I, we.
Citizens of our community would love it.
We should be pretty proud. There was only two cities mentioned. A lot of the others were private projects, so we were the only two municipal.
Oh, cool.
There was another municipal project for a parking lot, but.
Well, first of all, first of all, always proud of our city staff. I think you guys do a great job. I've really, in fact, I was telling Jim earlier today, I think this is about my year when I came on, and I've learned so much this year, and a lot of it I've learned from you, from you guys. And I think the work that you do is fantastic, so I'm always proud.
Appreciate it. I will make one comment.
Did they miss out? No.
No. The flood wall mitigation project was for the actual wall, not for the paving, which I didn't quite understand because I think that the paving is much more visually stimulating than the actual wall. And the, the wall has some issues that need to be corrected. And so, I want to say that now, that the, that city staff is aware of the issues that are out there, and they are not structural issues, they are maintenance issues that will be corrected by the contractor, by a maintenance bond, if necessary, so clarification, that, that.
It's still the wall.
It's still, it's still, it's, in my opinion, it's still amazing feat of construction.
You're just going to mill them around all the time.
Do you want me to show them around?
Yeah, show them to him.
Yeah, sweet.
Yeah, hit them up to him.
Yeah.
Start it.
Let him go.
We're going to give them back, Nick.
These are nice.
They feel like they're made out of.
They should have. Now, how did, how did you find out? I, I assume they reached out to you?
Ideal Ready Mix, McDowell nominated us for the project type.
Yeah, those are sweet.
So.
Can I get these in Jim's office?
It was, it was pretty nice, you know, to be there and be recognized or something like that. And the conference itself actually was a dual thing because Jesse got some CEUs for it, so. There's some other cool concrete stuff that they're doing out there, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
You can, you can have one of these. I thought I had more copies than this, but.
I like the good news last.
Very good.
That is, that is all the said news that I have, so.
Okay.
The best part about that is, is that I asked if anyone was going up to the, this awards presentation for the flood wall, they thought they were going up for the Roundabout.
We didn't know about it.
Oh, so it was.
Jim did, but we didn't.
It's a surprise.
I knew about one, they knew about the other.
Because we had two separate, we had two separate nomination forms come to each of the.
We didn't realize it was two separate ones, so.
Oh, how funny. That's why, so.
I don't want to go back to an agenda item, but I didn't talk about the agenda item that I was adding for next Monday.
Oh, right, yes, yeah.
The item is for a purchase of a rough terrain forklift. I think it's thirty-five thousand four hundred. Normally, we wouldn't come to something like this that's budgeted, but I wanted to explain kind of the, the use of it and what we're, in the budget, we have seventy thousand dollars budgeted for a telehandler. Based on when we were up in Davenport, we saw what they were doing. Based on when we were up in Davenport, we saw what they were doing with it. We thought that that was the right implement. But because of the space that we have down here, it's a lot different, a lot tighter quarters. We have a forklift, but it isn't one that is easily accessible over, you know, long durations or, you know, different terrain types.
Oh, yeah.
So, the, the rough terrain forklift has a lot higher profile on it, has a lot bigger tires on it, has the ability to move around.
I'll tell you what, if you've ever driven one that isn't, you run over one thing and it's like you've run over a car. It just shakes you. Yeah, so I understand the need for...
So, in there, we are, we're purchasing a used 2012 JCB forklift with thirty thousand ten hours on it. I had Chris do a lot of research on, on one, what, what the price, it's tough to price used equipment when you're a city and trying purchasing it, to see if you're getting a competitive deal. We, we did a lot of internet research and then reached out to our, our contacts that we have at dealerships and then rental facilities. And so, the one that's presented to you is the one that we think is the best deal for the amount of hours that we're gonna get and for what we're gonna use it for. So, I won't actually be here on Monday. Chris and Jesse will be here. I guess Brayden will be here as well for ten-year award. So, they can talk to it a little bit more testament of the actual function because they were the ones that oversaw the, the up and down of the flood wall. So...
Sounds good. Thank you.
You had that, and I think that was budgeted. We're using funds from previous flood cleanup efforts, the reimbursements that we've gotten from the federal government. You had seventy thousand set aside for that. This is thirty-some thousand.
Thirty-five four. And then we also, we're also getting pricing for two six-inch pumps. We have two wet wells down there, one for the Hawkeye storm and one for the Market Street storm that take, they don't take storm water from those two storm outlets, but they take storm water from the area, from the intakes around the flood wall. And they go into the wet well. And then we have, and then they also have, there are seepage lines that don't go in there, too, from water that comes underneath the flood wall. And then they go into the wet well, and that's why you had, we saw pumps, and we were throwing it over top of the wall. If we were to have a major rain event during that timeframe, we only have one six-inch pump and then actually wastewater. There's a, I think it's a four-inch electric pump that has a float on it. We feel like we need to have some backup. And actually, Leo had talked about planning for that. We need to have the ability to access a total of six six-inch pumps, which seems astronomical to me. But we want the ability so we can have two, one at each location to be able to back up the current pumping.
So, you don't have, it's not an agenda item for this next week?
No, but it will, it'll be coming up, and so that's why we're talking about it.
He'll be using the savings off of the other piece to go towards this. And the funding source that we're using is from, is dealing with floods. And this makes an awful lot of, all of these are items that are dealing with dealing, addressing future floods, so...
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, that's a nice award. That's a nice brochure. All right. You guys are somebody now.
I don't think there's anything else.
Anyone else from the crowd in the back? No? War God? Okay.
And I didn't have anything, so...
Oh, wow. All right. All right, well, that is it then. Thank you. Good night.
Thanks.